Hole for ARPA. And I hope everybody can see this tiny spreadsheet, but I was just trying to differentiate the, when we see the money that is left, and when I say left, it doesn't mean it's all like five million to spend. That's, these are pieces that are allocated. So we took out the contracts. We have about two point nine million for contracts that people are just waiting to. We're in the process of giving them their checks. They're gonna let us know when they want their checks, so to say. We removed that. We have about thirty-four accounts that are closed and done. We have eleven accounts that have funds available in them. And then we have eight accounts that are over. So when we, once these over accounts, once we make the transfers to those overages, in the top right corner here, it looks like to be about two million dollars available. So these are the accounts that I kinda wanted to go through today. And just make sure that, when I say available, of course, we have eight hundred ninety-seven thousand for gun violence prevention. And I just wanna make sure that the plan by December thirty-first, all those pennies are expected to be spent for that then. And if not, are we looking to transfer or not? So that was what I was kinda going to go through with the available funds. And then, Nick, I think you were saying how we do have some, like, there's still things out.
Oh, yeah.
We're still waiting on.
Oh, yeah. Still don't even know. Maybe, we're definitely north of two fifty.
Okay.
That's like, what I know is potentially coming down.
Is that what you mean?
There's other things that, just the hammer hasn't been dropped yet, but I'm waiting for those. And that probably will be around a hundred thousand as well. That's specifically only for Valley View.
Valley View?
Very specific to Valley View only. It's nothing to do with any other.
That was the hundred K or the two fifty?
Both.
Okay. And then, the UPD maintenance facility air handler, is that all set?
Yeah, it's not all set. I just got a quote for forty thousand, I think, or something.
Okay.
But it's only one quote. And because of the price, it's been up to it now.
And then I also, there's a, if you look all the way to the left, line eight, the Utica Fire Department fire truck.
Eighty thousand was, eighty.
It says negative eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I spoke with Diana. She confirmed that that was just encumbered twice. So it is actually zero dollars. We don't have to transfer eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars to this account. So little things like that is where I'm hopeful we're looking at correct transfers. The, the fire station, Station One overage for a hundred, we have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand left in that account. Are they done? The, I'm looking at you, Utica, the station number one.
Oh, yeah, that one's done.
Okay.
Well, it's done.
Some of these we will have to transfer to the right one. Lead and Healthy Homes, the grant, we ended up, it was, we agreed on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So we split the difference. So this is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars we'll have to transfer to the other overages, from what I'm told. Johnson Park Center, it was the same thing.
However, going through your overages, since most of the red are engineering, ADA complacency, I'm pretty sure I saw two hundred thousand dollar overage from my contract. So I, this discrepancies come up a few times in here where you're saying, who's the, the dog park? Dog park, like a hundred and ten dollars?
That's what.
I saw a contract that showed change orders that had a hundred thousand dollar overage on it, not a hundred and ten. And the same goes true with the compliant, ADA complacency. Two hundred thousand was the number that I saw in my contracts when I was reviewing all that, back when I was onboarding. So.
If that's the one I think.
I'm not sure exactly, 'cause some of your numbers didn't match those things that I've seen.
So Munis right now does say negative a hundred and ten dollars for the dog parks. And that's been settled since, it looks like two thousand twenty-four, but maybe what you're talking about are the encumbrances?
Well, he's looking at the whole, the whole project as a whole on his papers.
So whatever that got charged you in a different thing.
So, in, in Munis, in accounting, you can, it, it's possible that this, this might have to be corrected by the Controller's Office, that you need to make reclass entries to get all those expenses into one account. So it's possible that those expenses, they'd get spread out to different accounts?
Maybe.
Not ARPA accounts.
Some, something other than ARPA accounts.
I think that's my biggest concern, is the Controller's Office keeps telling me that we can't do transfers until closeouts at the end of the year.
Which is true.
Is that how we did it in years past? Because how are you supposed to be able to look and see how much?
Yeah, but how do you transfer money on an account that's not closed? That's like, that's like me giving you fifty dollars and saying, I've taken thirty of it.
Would've been, would've been charging the right account to begin with, though.
Without waiting for you to buy what you bought.
Because closing out twenty twenty-four and officially operating on twenty twenty-five, it'll change the twenty twenty-four values and the auditors, it'll change their whole trial balance.
So whatever.
So that's why, I don't know what, how it was done in the past, but that's the way it should be done.
That's what I'm hoping the Controller, maybe I wish they were here with us, us too. But then I want whatever makeshift spreadsheet that we can look at, that I know Munis, you can't physically close it out, but we can put our brains together and do the math of what we're gonna end up with. The city reimbursement one, we had the hundred twenty-five thousand, is that what was going towards the budget?
So originally, that money was supposed to be used to, from what I've seen, supposed to be used to fund the general fund. But over the last three years, that money was allocated within ARPA accounts. That's the purpose I see for that funding.
It was, I remember it was to payback.
It was never transferred into the general fund.
I don't think it's a, Marcus, is that with the one twenty-five, wasn't that the payback? Is that what? Sorry to pull you into it, but, the hundred and twenty-five thousand, was that?
I'll say it up here, so everybody can hear it, you know, um.
That was during COVID, right?
No, so what happened is, that's, that's what we're calling, that's what we called at the time and what we're calling now, unrestricted funds. So that's, that's the portion of ARPA that reimbursed us for expenses that we took. So there wasn't any specific place it was supposed to go. We used unrestricted funds to fund ARPA projects. But the reason for that being the line is so that that's the money that was unrestricted, because it was a reimbursement and not a direct grant.
And how much, do you remember how much was restricted versus unrestricted?
I don't know. I think we settled on about sixteen million unrestricted, but that's a really high number.
What, what of these funds left are unrestricted?
That's something that, um.
We're still looking at?
No, that was a report that was filed quarterly. And those reports haven't been updated since the first quarter.
But she's saying something different.
Well, Derek.
You're saying two different things. He's talking about, so Elmer's talking about the money that was spent that we considered unrestricted. She's talking about how much total do we think was unrestricted?
Well, I think the report does say sixteen million.
About sixteen.
Okay.
How much of that was spent?
In unrestricted.
Based on those reports?
We don't know.
We don't.
Okay. Got it.
I don't have access to the spreadsheet. The person who was doing that before is no longer here.
It just depends on how the city classifies each expense.
Yeah.
Right? And, and you and I might classify it differently. Most of them were vetted by Whitman. And Heather was in charge of managing to make sure we didn't go over our unrestricted amount. Without Heather here, we don't know what her final tally was.
This account originally had about one, one million in there?
Oh, okay. For the unrestricted?
Well, that was part, that was part of the unrestricted. Some of these, some projects within ARPA just were considered unrestricted, just 'cause they didn't meet the criteria as well. But this was part of them.
Deal. And then, I'm gonna shift gears also with Brian. Well, actually, would you know, I never actually got the answer, with the residential rehab. We have the three hundred twenty-two thousand left. Are they still doing homes?
I talked to Danielle earlier. She thinks it's a little lower than the three twenty-two, because they have a project in the works right now. That'll use a portion of that. She figures what's left is about eight houses. She's not looking to open up an application round at this point. She has a pipeline of potential properties that would sufficiently exhaust the funds available. And she feels that can be done next construction season, twenty twenty-five.
So then they can still fund it. So the eight houses would be?
And it's all obligated, so.
Sure, some questions.
Please. What do you, yeah.
I just got a question. So what, what are we over and what are we under? I'm behind your lines, because I think that that's what we're here for, seeing if we have any extra money and what it could be spent for. So if that's what the whole meeting's about, then let's, I know you have an answer, so you might as well just start explaining what, what the problem is.
I don't have all of them, because Roswell Concling Park, there's still expenses coming in.
That's capital.
So I'm gonna be recommending a reclass entry to the Sixth Council District ARPA account. There was about two hundred thousand dollars spent out of the paving contract for this. So I'm gonna be recommending. So would that change that account?
Wait, hang on a second. Where, where does that come from?
The six, not six.
Oh.
Not six.
Oh, okay.
Just six.
I was gonna say.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Where do you spend?
Good morning.
Good morning. So that.
I heard six, I get a little near.
You got like a shock dial?
Yeah.
So that account would be in the red, three hundred forty-two thousand dollars.
Another two hundred thousand of paving's going in? Because we already did two hundred thousand dollars paving, that's why it's now a negative a hundred twenty-six thousand.
That was for two separate areas of the city.
So we're doing four hundred thousand dollars to the Sixth Council District?
Yes, I can, I can provide you.
I don't care what, how it goes to, I'm just curious why we're spending so much ARPA on paving.
That's already dead spent.
It was the Barrick Street one?
Spent this year.
Barrick Street and with South Utica.
South Utica, the whole sidewalk. That was the whole point of the ARPA funding.
Somebody put it towards that, I thought that was already.
That wasn't true.
Okay.
I think the discrepancy, just so everybody knows and clear it up. But the discrepancy is, the last administrated, administration, administration billed it to paving. And Elmer wants it reclassified to bill it to ARPA.
Okay.
Right, because the count shouldn't be over four hundred thousand dollars when you only allocated one point six for it.
Well, no, but if you, if you paved, right, and they considered that a road, that's not part of the ARPA project. He considers it part of the ARPA project. That's a difference in the picture.
But I think that councilperson in that district stated publicly that that was the money that she was using for her ARPA funds. That included the island and the sidewalks, and the one that was done for South Utica. So that's why they took that classification originally out of that ARPA funding and why it's out of dash, why it's so out of.
So the difference is, do you think it was a supplement to the project or part of the project?
That was.
The paving itself, like on Barrick Street.
We would never have paid that if we didn't have that money allocated.
Well, that's, that's what he's earned. Yeah, right.
You know what I'm saying? Like, that's, that's kind of the whole point, where the council people should've only had that two hundred thousand dollars that they were allocated for that district. And should've never spent money out of that account unless more money was added.
It's, it's up to me, I mean, it's not up to me, but I think both points are fair. Because you can supplement an ARPA project out of the other budget.
You shouldn't, because those other budgets, that's the reason we got into this, to this issue of overspending on some of those accounts.
On some of those accounts, right.
And that's, that should never happen. And that was kind of the reason way back when, when I said we shouldn't be involved in any of the arbitrage insurance, because we never approved original, any of the original projects. So that's, that's what I'm saying, is that that's why that should've been, those should've had their own separate accounts, which we called for two years ago, when those, that way you could've wiped their munis and.
But you still shouldn't use it as an excuse to go over paving. If you use paving money for an ARPA project, then it should be, no, I know, but you gotta let me say it, though. So if, if you use money for an ARPA project out of your paving budget, and you go over on paving budgets, right, then you either should've not made that choice, right? But going over paving is a separate issue than whether this is an ARPA expense.
But Marcus, that's what I'm saying, is that they were using all that money, not knowing how much they were spending.
We do have available funds.
They had, they, they overpaid eight million dollars and thought that they had more ARPA funding. That was the whole argument that Frank Meolo gave to the council, was that we had extra ARPA funding. And that's why we ended up going over all that money and had, and had a bond for that two million dollars at the end of, at the end of last year.
I just don't wanna go forever, because what Frank was talking about is, he thought two million more than was set aside for paving. But that's set aside for paving, he's talking about the council district allocations.
Right, but that's part, that was part of it, because that money was paid out of that.
It's, it's, it's.
It's, but it's not, because that's why we're in the city.
Because Elmer's gonna make the decision to reclass.
If I can do the next one, uh. I don't know, Mike, if you have an answer, with the pathway suggests us for four hundred thousand, what is the plan with that? Is there another program in the works? Is that four hundred thousand staying or?
We're trying to get that program back up and running. We did have somebody who was in charge of that lead. And we would still like to use that for, use gun millets, I believe. So the intention is still there to use that funding for that purpose?
Well, then that's, what, it's just one of those concerns of it has to be transferred then, because by December thirty-first, because pathway suggests it doesn't exist. That was canceled. So if it's there, and one of the things I liked about the program is it just really focused more on the community relations and good stuff for the youth. And so when we talk about gun violence prevention, you know, we've used that in a lot of ways, important ways. Body cameras, the facilities, lots of things. But I wanna make sure it's something that touches the community, if we do get a say, but that's what I wanted to hear.
You know, we might have to create a new account and call it something different. You know, something that's not exactly these words, but the, the purpose of the.
The intention of that money is still the same intention it's always been.
Then you'll have to, you'll, you'll just retitle that before the end of the year, right?
Either retitle it or create another account that sets a lot, but that's, you know, that funding is still, the intention is still there to.
And then jumping to a small business assistance, so the DRI's, the twenty-one businesses got funding, and we're still waiting on that. And I, it's, my understanding, some of the small business assistance is going to the DRI projects as well, right? Is it, I remember one person got fifty-six thousand, are they getting this ARPA on top of that? Or are they, is it fifty-six thousand total? As an example, like, what is this ratio?
In, in order to entice applicants to take advantage of the DRI money, we felt we needed to sweeten the pot and add to the match. So that match that the city's putting up is coming out of the ARPA funds against the DRI. And there's, so they're getting a DRI grant out of that, the ten million.
Yep.
And we're covering, they're responding.
Do you know what the percentage of the match was?
It varies, because some is residential, some have residential as a component of the project. So that throws off the match. I, it, I can run it, but.
But there's enough funds here, then?
I looked at the numbers today, and we need, for the, for the match of ARPA, we need two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Okay. And there's three hundred and, about three hundred thousand left, yeah. And you need two, how much?
Two thirty-four.
And then, of course, the Utica Proud app till the end of the year.
Yes.
It's definitely been a slowdown since, I, I'm assuming, I don't know what your checks are looking like for the rest of the month, but since it was canceled, it seemed, but then it was restarted. I'm guessing we'll come under the three thirty-two, but does your office then have plans if there's anything left over?
I don't know that there'd be an awful lot left, if there is anything left over.
Actually, that there's other projects that are still ongoing, that you have to save the money, even though those accounts are un.
But under the small business assistance, what would it be?
But we still have a lot of money that's still expended that we don't have inside our city budget to cover those expenses for our money.
There's a lot of things that aren't even.
We built an ice skating rink, we don't have a zamboni, we don't have ice skates, we don't have this. There's a number of things that we still have to save money for. You just talked about overing accounts and then transferring money, and that's what you want to finish.
Right, so here's the problem with that, though. Small business assistance.
That you never finished from the beginning with these ARPA.
I'm with you. There's three hundred thirty-two thousand small business. If we take out that two thirty-four like it's allocated, there's ninety-eight thousand left. I'll be shocked if we hit ninety-eight thousand with, with Utica Proud by the end of the year. Uh, but.
Originally allocated.
I know, but say we don't, say there's fifty thousand left. If we don't move it out of this account, we just lose it, when we have other projects to send it to?
You have to finish the other projects that you have.
But in small business assistance fund, there are no more other projects.
I understand what you're saying, but that was the money, and I'll, and I'll pull it up. These are the monies that you had allocated, okay? Like, you had money allocations in your ARPA, in your ARPA project.
So we had to transfer those, though.
A City Hall air handler, police station, H B A, H B A, H B A C. You had W E F sewer repair. All those went over in the original projections, projections, so specific uses. So four hundred and forty-eight thousand was maybe used for childcare expansion, okay? But because the police station might've cost an extra three hundred thousand dollars, you no longer have those, all of those expenses, because those are outstanding bills.
Right now, with the overages, if you deducted that from the, what's available, it still shows, we're talking about the two million, and I'm just making sure this two million is allocated properly.
Right, but they just.
Right, but that two million is, and my best guess, six hundred thousand, and we're said and done with. The rest of my overages.
I don't even care, I'm not asking for pennies back from people or anything, I'm just saying.
Not to add anymore, but I have a million dollar ADA project this phase.
We bond for every year.
You know, we're not bonding a million dollars.
We have to bond for ADA.
We are not bonding for a million dollars.
That's fine, but that's.
Elmer and I and Controller, we have talked. We can only bond, we can only allocate so much out of bond money to this. We need ARPA money. I, Brian has given me money for it as well.
How many more years do we have left to do for that?
Five.
Five?
This is a six million dollar endeavor. The fact that we didn't just drop six million dollars in ADA complacency.
Well, we did do a ton of ADA with ARPA.
When we first got ARPA is baffling to me, but that's a side note. And that's my own opinion, not the city's stance.
But I'm just concerned, when we talk about, if, say there was fifty thousand left in small business assistance, if we're not like keeping track of every penny, because then you're not gonna transfer it to the proper place, so it's gonna get taken away.
That was the original amount allocated.
I, that's not the conversation, we're way past that conversation now.
Million dollar pot, okay?
Yes.
And Valley View costs six, seven, eight million dollars over. That sixty million dollar pot is going to be six million dollars under, over, under what you originally allocated, meaning that you have to stop other projects in order to fulfill your obligation of what you've already spent on ARPA.
I agree with you.
So that's what I'm saying, like, no, we can have this conversation all night.
Can somebody translate first?
So if you're, so if you're concerned. Hold on. So if your concern is that we're gonna lose out on money.
I wanna make sure we're transferring to the right places first.
Listen, if your concern is that we're gonna lose out on money, it's not a concern. We have the Budget Director, we have the Controller, there are, there are accounts that, there are accounts that are being reconciled. And every bit, every dollar is going to be allocated. And every bit, every dollar is going to be allocated by December thirty first the way it needs to be. There is not, there is not a situation where there is money that is not accounted for, or that we don't know about.
But there kind of is, because there's a lot of answered, like, there's a lot of unanswered questions of these funds, because we're not doing the transfers to see, we're not looking and making sure of how many bids are out. We're not looking at, this conversation we just have with small business assistance fund.
All of that stuff is happening, it is all happening, it is October.
Here's the difference.
Sixteen.
The last two years, there were weekly ARPA meetings, I got to go to many of them, this year, there, there aren't weekly ARPA meetings, there, it just feels like, it feels like more like silos. It feels more like I go back and forth with questions.
We're waiting for the dust to settle, so we know where to fill in the holes.
But it's almost November, how much more dust we have.
You go Walk Valley View, you tell me.
And I'm not like coming at anybody's projects.
I'm not coming at, I didn't get that, but I'm just saying, that's a valid statement, my answer to that is go Walk Valley View, dust settling, we'll be lucky to be out of here by the end of the year.
Literally. But pathways to justice, something's coming, okay, what, like, the, the federal government doesn't care if you say something's coming.
Right, but it's still, it's, it's money that is already allocated, it doesn't have.
Boy, if the program doesn't exist next year, you can't spend it on that.
Right, but.
It is allocated for that, it needs to be allocated by December thirty first, it doesn't, Katie, it is allocated for that.
But also, it's like a transparency for.
The mayor is still going to utilize it for that, that is the ARPA requirement.
And I hear you, I'm glad, but when we say that, the public doesn't know what that means, so what is it that the people will get more than a thousand dollars out of in that program?
For pathways to justice.
It has, it'll still be here, the same program?
Something similar, yes, that's the goal of the administration.
Those are the things that I think, I'm not hearing the, the points of, of what is it all, we used to have press releases all the time on this stuff, and I don't know.
Ten weeks, right.
Where else money is going, and I do.
I've been concerned with the ARPA money that was being spent erratically into a place where the city couldn't control it, within those last two years.
I've been on, I've been, you're the one who canceled it.
I mean.
No, that's a whole side conversation now, so.
Since we're, since, I could answer this in a short answer.
Yes.
You're worried about allocating two million, I have one point one million dollars roughly estimated for a snowmaking system at the ski hill. I have one point three million dollars to get the ski hill up to code and compliance. So that's two point three million allocated.
Didn't we get a grant for the ski slope though, where, where's that at?
Well, we're in the middle of it, we're in the middle of it, but it's, it's not like in our hand yet, so I don't spend money before I have it.
No, that's fine, uh, well, with government, my point is, there's, I, I know we have plenty of stuff to spend money on, I know we have plenty of projects to catch up on, but.
Or I got a police station that the rig is going to fall in.
I'll go around also, let's stand it up, I'm so sorry, Joe, you had a question first.
Can I allocate this?
I'm not interested in running this, Nick, Joe, and then, your mic still doesn't?
So my question here is, Elmer, Nick, okay, Mike, you want to join in? So I understand what you're doing, Katie, you're going through, you're trying to be proactive, you don't want to lose any money.
And I want to know.
Unfortunately, okay, these guys are in charge of it, the mayor and Mike, okay, well, they're not in charge, but they're watching over, okay? Elmer, are you confident that we're gonna be able to take care of this to make sure we're not gonna lose any money? You're the, you're the Budget Director, are you confident?
One hundred percent.
Huh?
Yeah.
Nick, are you confident?
Yeah.
Mike, you guys are on top of it, correct? Okay, so that's good, but we could keep going on.
Okay, where's it going? I'm, I'm happy with the confidence.
Listen to me, I'm not here to say you're doing anything wrong, it's good that you're out here being proactive, but these are the guys that are in charge.
But don't, don't.
For four years before this, you let the guy upstairs run rampant, nobody said a word about anything.
We can make this about politics if you want, and I'd be happy to go there, but I agree, we don't need.
Wait a second, I'm giving, Katie, Katie, I'm giving, no, I'm not done, I'm not done, I have the floor, I'm giving you a compliment, so don't have an attitude.
You had a question there.
I'm telling you, what you're doing is a good thing, let these guys do their job.
Good, we're on the same page.
Nobody questioned anybody when we had sixty-two million dollars and we're gone.
I questioned Heather nonstop, I was in her office every day, that's why I'm obsessed.
Did you ever call for a meeting, did you ever call for one of these?
I went to the ARPA meetings, we didn't need it in the same way.
Okay, but so, all I'm trying to say right now.
No, they were weekly meetings, that's.
And I, my mic, wait, I'm still got the floor for a second, all I'm trying to say, you're doing a good thing, it's good, but let these guys do their job. We're two months away, okay, obviously, nobody wants to lose any money.
I don't think my constituents would accept the answer of, okay, Avery said we're good, and we go away, and I believe you guys, we just need the proof of it.
Let me ask you this, oh, my mic's working, let me ask you this, you have constituents that are calling you, asking you about ARPA money?
Yeah.
Why don't you give me a list of them?
Okay.
Let me see who's calling, and, because you know what, my district, my district is twice as big as yours, and I don't have one person calling me about ARPA money. They're happy they got streets plowed, happy that the services we have, okay.
Frank, you had questions, I'm sorry.
We had all this money.
You have your mic on?
We had all this money last year, and it was just spent crazy, now we got peanuts left compared to what we had last year. And I think what Joe's saying, let them do their job, I got faith in them, I, I, I hope the city has faith in who the mayor picked, they picked the mayor. I mean, they're not gonna let the money go to waste, but nobody worried about the sixty-four million for four years, it was just, I don't know where the hell it went. And nobody answered for it.
It was thirty-four accounts that were closed.
And nobody answered for it.
People, okay, people keep saying this with ARPA, we had fifty-nine projects, I made entire documentary videos explaining every project. Everybody could get these answers, unfortunately, our colleague wanted to stop having transfers go through the council. That's when we broke down and lost a lot of updates, every other place.
Does anybody else in the council have any questions about ARPA money from people, I don't, do you, do you?
I still do.
Do you, Venice?
Well, I'd like to know, because all she's asking.
But you have constituents.
I do have, I do have a question, that's what you asked me, right?
No, I asked you, do you have any constituents?
I don't, I don't mind her asking.
No, I don't mind you.
Venice.
Yeah, that's the thing, I don't mind you, you start talking about last year and the past administration, that's Philip. What we're talking about now is just, she's setting up with the, the different numbers.
It's irrelevant at the very least.
Well, stop mentioning the past mayor.
Who spent the money, Jesus Christ, how Mary spent under his administration all that money?
Well, we're not spending it, but now we're looking at, now we're looking at how much is left.
Come on, now we're looking at Venus, oh, we're not working at the sixty million dollars that we're spending.
Can, can Councilman, Councilman Urban has the floor.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars out of sixty million dollars.
Did you have a question, did you have a question, I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear you, we have some decorum.
My question was, I don't see what the problem with us going over this, and everybody's getting upset about it, there's no problem.
But my problem is, is where was the problem with the sixty million dollars was spent?
I think we're on the same page.
They're telling me where the money allocation is going, they have projects that are not completed, but they all respect every single project that they have.
I just said to you.
And that's exactly what I want to hear from them.
And that's what they're saying.
Right, and I don't mind, they can say whatever they want to say, I want to hear it from them.
And I, I trust you guys too with this, I just will want answers of where it's going, just like we've been thinking the rest of it, and you said you think there could be four hundred thousand left?
Potentially.
Like barely left, which makes sense.
If I'm being, you know, as conservative as possible with the funding, um, to be careful not to spend any additional money on new things. That should cover hopefully enough to cover the rest of the Roscoe Conking Park project. If by some miracle more happens to be left over, there are, there are plenty of options and plenty of plans.
And you guys have a plan of the exact accounts it'll go to by December thirty first?
Yeah, those, the transfers into the accounts that are in the red will be made prior to that.
Yes, but everything else, like when we talk about.
It has to be.
Obviously, the transfers are gonna happen, because we have ten weeks with, and that's including holidays, so that's why I put off this conversation many months.
I will say though, we're, we're, you know, I'm up there every day, um, working on this stuff, so the holidays don't matter to me.
And then, oh, the last, not to jump back to, Chancellor Park, you said a fence was coming, you still the bed?
It's got installed today.
Oh, really, good timing.
So that's going, close out.
Thank you, and then, you're here, hi, we were talking about the gun violence prevention program.
Okay.
I just got one question, can you fill out accounts that are not completed?
I cannot, I'm told I cannot.
Can you fill out accounts that are not completed, so this is where the understanding has to come from of why there's still accounts open and not closed, because you can't close accounts that haven't been completed.
But we can still plan, and we can not have the yearly close meetings.
They are, they are, I don't understand why you're so concerned, if you've got the spreadsheet and you met with others once a week, what they're telling you, you should be able to confirm with us. You said you talked to the Controller's Office, so who is wrong in the figures of what you're saying, that of the information that you provided here, who's wrong?
Nobody's wrong, there's just more to go, I'm waiting on the answer.
Okay, so what is the question, and you're confident in the numbers that you provided here, and you said what's available, so you've got what, hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand eight hundred for the maintenance facility air handler at U P D, that's completed, there's twelve thousand eight hundred in there, so what is our plan for it? That's the conversation here today.
Twelve thousand eight hundred dollars?
And I know it'll be transferred.
As far as PD goes, uh, they have a lot of other things that are.
Guys, I'm not asking for that part, it was just here for the confirmation of if the city already had a plan and where it was going, anyway, if we can pivot.
I do, I do, actually, maintenance building needs a fence and a controller, and so far, that's coming to about forty-three thousand dollars from police maintenance line directly, so, yeah.
But literally, and I don't, I understand that part, but literally, when it comes to the federal government, and you say air handler, just like with bonds, whatever you write, it has to go to that. So that's where I'm getting into the weeds of this, but with the gun violence prevention, I didn't know, we had nine hundred thousand left, I assumed some of that will be going towards the salaries we were using with the ARPA, salaries for police officers, would you guys have other?
Wait, I know, one, one more thing, and I don't mean to interrupt, please, I'm sorry, I just got a very important question, so it says the Bertolini clubhouse has negative two hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
So what was the total allocation for the Bertolini clubhouse?
This is a whole separate conversation, can you finish this?
No, it's not, because it's, it's a question, because that was over by a lot, only millions of dollars.
It was a question that could have been.
Well, Bertolini is Valley View, also Roscoe Conking is Valley View, so.
How much over was it, we only had originally two million dollars allocated, so how much was it spent?
Originally, yeah, I think we're up, right now, we're up to almost six.
Six million dollars, and we're worrying about twelve thousand, where was the question?
When it's all said and done.
So you'd rather give the government back twelve thousand, you don't care.
I'm just asking you, where were you concerned with six million dollars that was spent on it?
That's a whole separate conversation.
You went to meetings with others, what was the problem?
No, six total.
You're trying to prove the last administration bad, this one good, we're fucked that one.
I knew it was bad, I couldn't wait for it to get, I never got another four years, we wouldn't be in this position.
That's fine, we're completely disagreeing. Okay, order, um, sorry, W Chief, you're in, back to the gun violence prevention question. Do you guys have plans, or have you heard about it?
In March of twenty-two, twenty-two, as you know, we, you guys approved us to hire five additional officers using ARPA money, um, there was a delay in the hiring of those officers. And, I mean, and it's set to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty-four, as far as the chargebacks and how the Controller's Office and the Budget Director does that, I don't know what they, how they charge back, or if they have charged back that money yet for the salaries for five officers.
And that goes, and then we have the grant starting January first for the six hundred twenty-five thousand.
So, not necessarily January first, but that money has to be exhausted before we utilize the grant, so.
That grant started last year.
It started, it's, it's open-ended, it's, we can start when we choose to start, but we can't start it.
See, that money's safe, we can keep paying salaries out of it.
Until ARPA money is exhausted for the officers.
Do you have any thoughts as well, Stephanie, legally of, of how stuff gets transferred, or any of the contract conversations, no, deal?
The only question for Ed, and I don't even, I don't even want to roll that up, so if it's those five officers, and that's what we're charging to that money, and that's when the other grant gets effect, then will that whole, that whole account has to be expended by two thousand twenty-six?
Yeah.
So if there's more money in that than those officer salary for two thousand twenty-six, we're gonna have to give that money back, unless we spend it on something else.
That's a budget question, so.
But that, that money is technically obligated in the budget through twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, but we get it again in twenty twenty-six.
But what I'm saying, if, if the five officers don't come up to whatever that total is, what do you do with the balance?
Which we did, we divided it so that it was even, so that it ended in two thousand twenty-six, that was the whole argument of where the chargeback came in these accounts during the budget.
No, but five officers don't come to nine hundred thousand dollars, so there's nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You got a year left that you can spend this month, right, so the balance between the nine hundred and what you spent.
We've already spent, like.
When do you have to the amount, when do you have to be able to spend that nine hundred dollars?
Twenty twenty-six.
Right.
Right, so one more year.
So it's not at the end of this year?
Two.
Two more years, it's two more budget years, so if you take out two hundred and fifty thousand this year, two hundred and fifty thousand next year, plus increments and increases, you're gonna be close.
Yeah, so the only question I had was to get to everybody, it's not even like skepticism, it's just a question to get to everybody, that nine hundred thousand dollars is all covered in that salary. Because it seemed like they were making a mistake in their minds, to me, that's fine.
No, that's, that would be, that'll be expended, because that was divided evenly, remember we went through that whole thing with dividing that money, making sure that the chargeback was.
Well, because, and, and it's not to, correct, because part of the gun violence money was for the body cameras, and part of them was for the bulk, pole cameras. So as long as the salary part is all that's left, and then that comes to a perfect zero, then that's fine.
Yes, which is what, which will happen.
Right, no, cool, we just, after December thirty first, we can't make any more transfers, so we gotta make sure.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, I, I would take comfort in knowing if some of the stuff is getting transferred to the absolute things we have coming, also, I put in my email to the staff, I think it was even talked about last council meeting, but the, we get constant complaints about the speakers in here. Like, if there was money from facilities, if we could finally replace those, that was something I would love to have a day more and.
Yeah, so, I mean, the simple fact is, one, we're being diligent through our budget office, through the Controller's Office, reconciling all these accounts. And we've also been in contact with our federal representatives to make sure that we're staying in line with all the reporting they need to make sure that we don't lose a penny. So, yes, when you look at this, there are absolutely, you know, some question marks, but the reality is, there isn't money that is not accounted for. Okay, either through projects that we're still waiting to reconcile, get reports from, or it's been acknowledged by the Budget Director to say, hey, this is on the radar, where we might have extra money, we need to make sure that we can allocate it. So from an administration, we have done and continue to do everything that we need to do so we don't lose a penny of this, and it's gonna be done, so, I mean, again, like Joe said, I appreciate, you know, having this conversation, I think it's important, and I also appreciate the fact that this should have been a better accounting for the last couple of years, and I think, think we should discount that either. But here we are, and we are finalizing the last two and a half months of it, but there is obviously a path forward, and there isn't going to be a dollar missed out.
I've been, I've been doing the spreadsheet since June, and updating my numbers every single month, and I'm following all the overages that continue to come in. But anytime there's an available balance in any accounts, I'm bringing that up to the mayor, and as an administration, we're making sure that none of those funds get lost by the end of this year. So we are, you know, we've been actively working with organizations, the state, to make sure that we don't lose any of this money.
And is, and I think my request as a council is just getting updates of where things will be going towards eventually, it doesn't have to be today, obviously, but whatever that ends up being, and I had another question with Nick, maybe it's Nick or Elmer. The skate parks, we originally allocated two million, they came to about one point six, we transferred out four hundred thousand, but for a period of time, there was nine thousand dollars left sitting in the account. I know we ended up doing that rubber and everything over there, but wasn't that paid for by a bond, where did the last nine thousand go?
I don't know where, that's not a.
Is that Elmer's question?
But I do, I can answer two, that skate park in Proctor Park, which is not technically complete, because it's missing blacktop, and that, without blacktop, it's not any acres.
Okay.
So, the blacktop, that is another hundred and forty thousand, maybe.
Do you have like a whole list of all this stuff that we could just look at of?
Yeah, but it's a lot of different places, and they only get pulled out when it's time to talk about that specifically, so.
Do you know, with the nine thousand dollars that got spent, out of the skate parks, if it was for the rubber, was it for the rubber, because if that, I thought that was for the bond, here's my question, I'll rephrase it. We applied for the bond for four hundred fifty thousand dollars for Proctor and the baseball field over there and the skate park, what did we do with that money?
I don't have the answer, I have to confirm that.
Because work got done, and that's, yeah.
I mean, work across the board there got done, many other side projects inside of the conglomerate of Roscoe Conking or Proctor Park even, right?
And there was in addition to.
Right, all in addition to, you know.
I just want to make sure that nine thousand wasn't for the bond money.
I mean, it was under my understanding, it was not bond money, it was all ARPA, I thought, but.
No, the council bonded for it, and the baseball field over there.
Well, we did the baseball field just recently.
I, I know it's shocking that we had to bond for more money, yeah.
I mean, that's a.
I think, see, in my philosophy, as long as we're here with this conversation, I think when it comes to ARPA, and it's. everybody said, you know, we have all these facility repairs and I, and I agree, you could keep going, you could keep paving roads, but these are also costs the taxpayers have to put anyways, as like the function of a city. These are the, what it costs to run a city. So if we have an opportunity with COVID funds to catch up our parks and, this is why it was for the water slide. This is why it was for a lot of things, to give back to our community, things that they can tangibly touch and skate on and do ice.
To that side of it, that's exactly why I say I'm surprised we didn't just put six million into our parks ADA compliance.
But those were, that's a separate debate.
Take that to the water slide, because we would be in the moron hall.
Yeah.
Well, we still have this.
Because I, because if you go to West Utica, Addison Miller, Pixley Park, like, those haven't been touched, oh my God.
There's a debate to be had there, but yeah.
They're in, they're in the, of the worst shape. Of, Pixley is probably the worst park that we have. And seven hundred and fifty thousand just for that one park.
Like I said, we're, we're being diligent about making sure that we're not taking funding away from its original purpose.
Okay, I don't need to interrupt, but there's a question that I have too. How many projects did we actually cancel?
There's really the website and water slide.
Three that come to mind, but I think it is a little bit more than that.
So we didn't cancel that move, probably would be, you know, not even have twelve thousand dollars left in the fire account, because we would be over by millions and millions of millions of dollars.
So when you have sixty million to spend and you gotta figure, I don't know, it doesn't really matter, whatever.
We should figure it out over the last couple of years.
Dude.
Not waiting until the last minute, because we had to cancel those projects because we did not have money left. So you wouldn't even be talking about what was left in the account.
Are you just so upset we actually have two million dollars left and nobody wants to say it? Like get over it.
I don't believe we had, I don't believe we had two million dollars.
Well, that's what, in this available account, once you do the transfers, this is the whole meeting, is there's two hundred million dollars available. And no, I know we have charges coming. I wanted to make sure all this two million dollars is getting spent to the right accounts.
But a, a good portion of that two, that available money is still allocated, allocated towards funds, like the pathway to justice career, it's still being planned to be used for that stuff.
I just, you guys say, if you can bring us a report in December, just of exactly where every penny is going in the assessment, I think I would feel a lot better on that part.
Diligently to make sure that we don't lose any of that money, I mean, that's.
There will be no money lost.
That's the goal, that's what I want to hear.
But the big, you know, since, since I started doing this in June, every single month, the overages in, you know, particularly Roscoe Conkling, Bertolini clubhouse, those accounts keep going into the red and.
Right, so we have nine.
Before we start any new projects, you need to make sure that you can cover your overages. And that's the problem we're still seeing.
And for people listening at home, we have the nine accounts over. It was the six districts for ARPA, ARPA funding, the Roscoe Conkling, the splash pad installation, dog parks, technically under ten dollars. Harbor Point, Proctor Park Pavilion, Bertolini Clubhouse and the ADA compliance. And then we have two point, that came to about nine hundred thousand, then there's eleven accounts with available funds totaling to two point nine million. And just to read these off for the people listening, it's necessary public facility repairs, gun violence prevention, UPD maintenance facility, air handler, the fire station one, there's a couple grants have to be transferred out, pathways to justice, small business assistance, phase one at Chancellor Park and various park improvements is what we're looking at, is that two point nine. When you subtract the nine hundred thousand over from the two point nine, the whole point of this meeting was to make sure this last two million dollars is well spent. So thank you, everybody.
I made some modifications to this spreadsheet based on some of my knowledge. The gun violence prevention funding, that nine hundred thousand dollars will be used as intended to go towards the police officers and to fund the general fund. I also got rid of the three hundred and thirty-three thousand for the small business assistance, because that, there's still the intentions for that to be used. And I'm gonna recommend a transfer from the paving project to the six council districts ARPA fund, which would bring that account into the red, three hundred and forty-two thousand. So with that, the available balance would be four hundred thousand dollars. And as I've said, hopefully that will cover the the golf course expenses.
And, um, yeah, and just following up, if you guys can also check it on the small business assistance and make sure, whatever, the estimates, I, I know with us, like Utica Proud is doubling down now since before June, so if we can just really even do an estimate on worst case scenario payout, I don't know how far back behind you are on checks or not, but, um, thank you very much. Does anybody else, Joe, Bob, do you guys have questions? Councilman Williamson?
I just want to assure you again that we are meeting frequently and we're, you know, we're not gonna let this money go loose.
That's all, I think we're all on the same page.
We do have plans for this.
You guys have a lot on your plate with us, so thank you very much, I will adjourn the meeting? Make a motion to adjourn? Second? Thank you.
The last looks like a placement of an honorary street sign for Reverend Dr. Mary Webster. Again, Councilman Peter.
Yeah, so this is, as we can all see, a proposed resolution calling for an honorary street sign on Arcadia Avenue in honor of Reverend Dr. Mary Webster. You know, I'm sure many of us on the council are aware of Dr. Webster's work in our community and her involvement throughout several years, and I believe an honorary street sign is a great way for the council to show its appreciation. This proposal was forwarded to Chief Williams, and if passed, the city will ensure, I just want to note this, the city will ensure that the 911 call center is provided the information regarding the change with the honorary street sign in case there's an emergency in that area. But otherwise, I would request this to be full council, if anyone asks questions.
Any questions? No questions?
I got one saved, Rob.
Pardon?
I got one thing left.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Passing out this thing, so we got this issue through with its head all over social media, so.
Is this pertaining to the upcoming meeting? Councilman?
Well, we're just going to discuss it. It doesn't mean anything because nobody's name's on it, so.
So I'll take that as a no.
No names on it. I got two of them. It's kind of unfortunate, but I mean, it is, everything's all over social media, it's all getting crazy, and we've got to do what we've got to do.
What is the, what's everything that's on social media that's getting crazy?
Well, say you don't live in, you don't live in Uta.
Is that?
Well, I'm just saying, listen, I'm not going to get an argument. I'm not going to get an argument.
I'm not either, but if you want to do this, let's do this. And I need to be really clear. You guys are all ecstatic at the foil that you helped furnish. No, let me finish. And I'm just really curious, you know, one of the lines that I feel like people keep forgetting out of that is that no charges are being brought against me. If I did nothing illegal, and I haven't, what are we doing here? This is politics. And for the last time, can we focus on the city? Anything? Children are dying, our homes have lead, roads need to be paved, and in cornhill, but you guys want to focus on where I spend my time. You can make it a political issue, but just call it what it is. Don't call it that it's actually a legal issue.
Katie, can I just say one thing, and I don't really, but where you're going with this right now? None of us sitting at this, at these tables asked for this, okay? So nobody?
Who typed this up, then? What do you mean, nobody asked for it?
I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about the foil. When the foil request that all of us got here?
Right.
If we didn't act on any of this, Katie, we wouldn't be doing our jobs.
No, you guys literally did ask for the foil, though.
We didn't ask for the foil.
That's what Stephanie, Corporation Counsel, didn't you say that it was a request for the foil from the council? Or who requested the foil?
There was a request made on the floor of a council meeting, and that's what we acted on.
I agree, I don't remember actually part of that.
I think to clarify Joe's point is that the complaint was filed by a private citizen to the Board of Elections, and that's where the investigation was prompted.
I'm not, you don't know anything.
And this council did receive the foil with sworn affidavit by you stating that your residence is not in the city of Utica. And if you don't think that that's an issue pursuant to our charter or public officers' law, and we don't have the right to question you on that, then you're the one with the problem.
Samantha, I have a question for you. If that is the case, no, 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 if you want to talk about this, let's talk about this. If that is the case.
Councilperson Colosseal Testa.
Okay, Councilman, we'll go there. If that's the case, why am I not charged?
Technically, not everything, when people are charged with something, is necessarily criminal. So it can go to a civil matter.
Well, let's follow that up.
And that's what this is. So if you're not concerned with where you live and you're confident in your ability to prove your case, then this should be no problem whatsoever moving forward on it.
I have, I can follow up on the political debate of my time and dedication to Utica, and how many hours a day I'm here at City Hall versus I don't know how many of you are.
That's opposite in your affidavit.
That's not what this is. But if you want to bring up the criminal part of this, I do, you guys want to bring this up, but then why would a district attorney, and I hope everybody's listening to this, the county district attorney stalked me, pursued a criminal investigation on me for 18 months. There is five terabytes, terabytes of surveillance footage of me 24/7 outside of the residence. Do you guys know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars this has been? I hope the county's listening. People seem to think that this is going to scare me. I'm surprised you aren't all embarrassed to show your efforts of wasting time on this, but then also exposing the county for the hundreds of thousands of dollars wasted on this. This isn't just a Utica issue anymore. This is far, far worse.
So we'll make your money work hard, and not ignore it.
I, I can see why you guys want me off the council, but I'm not going anywhere. And legally, whatever you try to do here, also won't go anywhere. But by all means, if you want to go head to head here of.
So where do you live?
I, I have two residences.
So you have, where's your primary?
That's not a thing. You guys are going off of laws that aren't a thing. So if you guys wanted to pursue this foil and this.
This is why, this is why we're going to get.
No, no, we're also going to stay on the floor. This, this investigation, you said a private citizen. Yeah, Russell Pelley.
No, it wasn't, it was actually Russell Pelley.
That's actually what the foil releases.
It did not.
So the foil releases.
It was not Russell Pelley.
That was one of the people.
It was by the name of Mark Hart, who I don't know.
No, I'm going to finish my sentence. Russell Pelley bribes me.
It's not Russell Pelley.
He brings me $500, wanting federal ARPA funding.
Saying it was not Russell Pelley that started the investigation.
I'm pretty sure I know what my, what my situation was.
You should read your own investigation.
So in January, when that one was closed, it was reopened based off of Russell Pelley's demands, and I'm just shocked the district attorney would pursue it for this long, as in his own words, he said, "There's not a criminal matter here, but it could be a political one."
So you're saying that it wasn't us, it was a Democratic district attorney, the one that filed that, so it's technically not political?
You keep talking in circles if you need to here, but that's.
Was it a Democratic district attorney that found the investigation? Therefore, it would not be political because it is the same political party as yourself.
And here we are today, under Republican administration, and here we are of this council wanting to obtain a majority at any cost, literally, again, at any cost. What a waste of time. Who cares? There's a poll camera put outside my house? What, how much do those cost? $20,000?
Is anybody on this council is for a poll camera to be put in our house?
Katie.
No, no, no.
Katie, listen, just like in our other meeting, I'm not trying to hurt you, and I agreed what you said. We didn't do this.
You literally did this, Joe.
No, we didn't.
Yes.
Katie, there's eight people in a foil that have, from your mother to your father to your neighbors, stating you don't live there.
Joe, I did nothing wrong. There's not, so I.
Well, you have to live in Utica to be in the council.
I'm in Utica one to seven nights a week. I'm a single mother.
Okay.
Let's start here.
Katie, I don't care.
No, you guys want to talk about this.
Listen, I don't care about this.
You do.
I got this sent to me as a foil. As a council person, if I didn't act on this, I wouldn't be doing my job to my constituents.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
It came in front of us.
Because you made it.
And we're not doing anything. We're asking for you to explain.
I'll explain.
You're explaining.
So, yeah.
Nobody's doing it. What are you getting upset about? You would do that, if this happened to anybody else here, you would do the same thing.
No, no, no.
Yes, you would.
You want to know what I'm upset about?
What happened? We didn't do it.
No, no, no. I have full right to be upset, and the whole county should be upset. Hundreds of thousands of dollars on an investigation, or where does Katie really spend her time? The proper way to have pursued this was through, sue me through civil court. We could have squashed this a year ago in civil court. You can, I am in Utica, I have my business. No, 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 let me finish. If you want the answers, we're going to go there.
Okay.
Is this, I'm a single mother, I have two little girls, I have to divide my time and get support, also in Herkimer. I opened my coffee shop at 7:00 a.m. I don't even know why I'm honestly explaining this to you guys, because if you've actually read all the documents, like I'm sure you were, just so getting to read, you could see it for yourself. But I'm in Utica daily, I own my coffee shop in downtown, I'm also at my apartment in Utica, and that's legal. Whether you like it or not, even though it's politically inconvenient for you, what I'm doing is 100% legal. So if anything, the real question here should be asking the county, why the district attorney decided to pursue this criminal investigation for something that isn't a criminal matter and waste hundreds of thousands of dollars? Actually, I would like the actual amount that was wasted on this, for no charges to be brought to me, and now the council tries to orchestrate it and pretend like they have any say to kick me off? Oh, well, guess what? I'm not going anywhere.
Katie, nobody wants you to go anywhere.
I, just say that you do.
Katie.
It's fine, but.
You got, listen to me. You got, you got seven affidavits I got. I didn't ask for them.
Joe, Joe, you want me to go through this again? I will, Councilman, I'm sorry.
I will, but I'm just telling you something.
No, I.
This has been going on, hey, I got one question for you.
I hear it.
Okay, one question for you. You just used the word dual residents, okay? So since 2019, and God rest my mother's soul, my mother used to say, "Where there's smoke, there's fire." So since 2019, this has been a question. I've never once heard you talk about dual residents. I heard you state you live on Four Cottage Place. I've never heard about dual residents. So now this is something new about dual residents. If dual residents is legal, if the judge tells us it's legal, if Corporation Counsel tells us it's legal.
No, no, the only part that matters if it's legal is what it was, would be ruled on in court, it's not based on opinions in this room.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Okay, so if dual residents is legal to be a council person in the city of Utica, that's fine. I don't care. I don't want to do this.
Then what is this? Then what is this that we are so concerned about? If I've committed a crime, somebody let me know. Otherwise, this is politics.
Why don't we have clarification from, from the judge? He would have more knowledge.
I would also.
I think that that's the whole point of having the hearing.
I want to add one, I want to add one more thing that I didn't get to finish. This was brought up last January. That was when the first investigation started. I complied completely. That got closed. It gets reopened again, based off my opponent's fiance, Russell Pelley, who tried to bribe me. Nobody seems to, I'm actually very concerned by the amount of people who aren't concerned by that. That's very telling every time.
Did he charge?
So.
So there's no criminal charge, what are you talking about?
Here we go, to this now violent.
As a council person.
Convicted felon who's now acute, like attacking me and threatening me with the same stuff that he's done time for, is after me, but now we have a district attorney who is pursuing this investigation based off of his request. And meanwhile, I want this also on camera, here we have, here we have this bribe that does not get pursued and investigated. Here we have widespread election fraud, widespread election fraud that happened between him and his fiance, Morela Pacmez. Nobody looked at that once.
Is Russell Pelley a council person?
And, but then when we get to residency, when there is no criminal precedence, when there is no.
Did Russell Pelley get charged for a bribe? No, and Russell Pelley is not a council person.
Sam, you really, if you want to keep going, you can.
Therefore, it is under the council's review.
No, no, no.
To call for a hearing, and that's with this request, and then you can answer all the questions that you'd like in a room with us, and if you have no problem, and you have a case, and you say that you have dual residency, and that's legal.
Can you just?
Then so be it.
No, 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 you just.
Because according to the documents and the affidavits that we received, it was not there.
You can try to, when, you can try to switch the laws around however you want every time, but it's actually not going to work in a final court.
Did you not sign an affidavit stating that you live as your primary residence at 109 Delros Place?
What does that have to do with anything? Do you need to understand?
Joe, I got to be honest with you, we'll push, I have no other.
No, no, I want it on record. I want it on record. I, I do have dual residences, but I've also want it on record.
Where is your primary residence?
That doesn't mean anything with what you're requesting. No, but it does it, and this is what, this is the other issue with this council.
Point of order, Judge Garamond, can you please explain the difference of a primary residence and dual residence?
No, 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 that's not actually.
With public officers' law and election law? Please, thank you.
First of all, the common council has the power to investigate just about anything. It may do so by a resolution that is not, has no veto, because it has nothing to do with the mayor. It's, also gives power to have witnesses, et cetera. However, it's under section 40 of the second-class cities law that says you need a three-quarter vote to investigate. You can use any kind of word you want. If you're going to call people to appear, you're probably going to need subpoenas, and under section 40, you can issue subpoenas. They are signed by the president of the common council. He's not involved in the investigation itself, but he does sign the subpoenas. They'll say so in the legislation, and you have to get the permission under the general municipal law and discuss the matter with the district attorney if you're going to issue subpoenas. All was done in two hearings that was held, oh, no, one was held, one was not. The first one was the one that created the law that allows common council to investigate the city of Utica versus Hannah, and I was the attorney for the common council, and that was a public division decision that we won. We didn't have a hearing because Hannah reinstated the chief of police, which was the subject matter of the hearing, but we had the power, subpoena, et cetera. Then the second one was the matter of Pileman. That did go to a hearing and was done in the same manner under section 40. Many subpoenas were issued, many people testified under oath, and anyone who wished to be represented by council could be. Mr. Chief Pileman had an attorney, and I talked to his attorney and told him if he wished to be present for any of the proceedings, he was welcome to do so, and all of that was done in private, in behind closed doors. So we do have some history. I maintain that if you're going to investigate anyone or anyone in this government, you have to follow section 40. And you can do it by resolution that is not subject to a veto. The president of common council's role only is to sign subpoenas. He does not become involved in the investigative process. Obviously, everyone has a right to counsel, and if the person appears and is a subject matter, they are entitled to counsel, and if subpoenas are requested to be issued, that becomes a little dicey, because we've never had that kind of proceeding involving the members of, of the legislature. We, a councilman, I think, was removed once he was convicted of a crime. That was a long time ago, but other than that, so, and there's another problem. The common, I talked to Charlie Brown yesterday about this. If there is such a proceeding involving the council that does it properly through the section 40 of second-class cities law. through the section 40 of second-class cities law, I will not participate because, uh, the subject matter of the subpoena and hearing is my client. I do not, uh, choose my clients and I do not prosecute them or have hearings or conduct those things. So the common council would also, if we're going to do this properly and had eight votes, uh, with five votes, they could hire a attorney. Uh, of course, they would have to provide attorney and probably eventually for the person that you're charging, that they're probably charged against the city also at some point. So this is not a very simple matter. Mr. Brown, uh, and I, uh, have talked about this and that there's various procedures. Just saying you want to have a hearing, uh, doesn't say who will conduct the hearing, number one. Uh, you need somebody to conduct the hearing. The last one it was done, I did, and then sometimes I even regret that I was involved in that, to tell you the truth. Because it went nowhere. I don't know if it was ever done to go anywhere. But, but that did not involve a client of mine. Involved the, a client, a person who was appointed by the city of Utica. And I don't, I don't say, that there was no counsel. He had his own counsel. So this is not a very simple matter. I believe any resolution that you pass that doesn't have eight votes pursued to section 40, you don't have a power to investigate. You don't have the power to issue any subpoenas except then there's a lot of case law under that. And of course, the leading cases, city of Utica versus Hannah. So that is my answer to that. The resolution that you had before you now, normally a resolution can be, uh, approved by a five-four vote. You don't have, uh, you have eight people here, number one. And number two, I'm saying that you can't pass that resolution because it doesn't give you the ter, uh, authority to investigate and issue subpoenas. Because you have to have eight votes. Three-quarters votes, that's what the statute says. And, uh, that's what I discussed with Mr. Brown yesterday. And, uh, he knows what my position is on that. So if you wish to introduce this resolution and have the power to investigate, you have to have eight votes. That's my position. I, I don't ask that anybody agree with me, including the corporation counsel, but that's-
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, the one thing, can you also clarify public officer's law for dual residency?
Pardon me?
Public officer's law for dual residency.
Well, residency is, uh, as the treatise that I had before me. Residency is a fundamental principle of local government. Is a basic requirement served as a public official or a government, uh, official and also for voting in local government elections. Despite the important role that residency plays in local governments' operations, it remains a mystery to many local officials. The, this treatise says, uh, residency seems like a simple question. And quite frankly, as the treatise says, it's just the opposite. And quite frankly, as the treatise says that I had before me, it requires a testimony, uh, that, uh, under the fundamental provisions of law, people have to be sworn. You hear a lot of hearsay, I've heard a lot of hearsay tonight. Uh, but when you get asked people to come before you and tell the truth under oath, sometimes they don't want to come, but you can make them come because you have the power of subpoena. You also have the power of subpoena deces teum, which allows you to get, uh, records of other places and other governments. Uh, nobody's going to bring their records without a subpoena deces teum. And you have no power to subpoena unless you follow, uh, section 40 of the second-class cities law. So, uh, uh, that's where we are with this matter. And, uh, so it's, it's, it's a multiplicity, uh, uh, question. Uh, I think the simple introduction of resolution doesn't do it. And, uh, that's, that's where I stand at this point.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, I think you're-
I have not done this without discussing this.
Judge, I think you're confusing a hearing with an investigation.
Pardon me?
I think you're confusing an investigation with a hearing. There's no investigation that needs to be completed for the simple fact that we received a foil.
Let me, let me just adjust this. If you don't, give me a minute. I get an echo from, uh-
And if anybody is curious of the questions of law and what residence is, uh, you know, I've spoken with 30 lawyers across the state. I'm not worried about this, by the way. If I look angry to you tonight, I'm, I'm, not, this is a joke to me. I'm used to this with my Republican colleagues.
Katie, just answer it simple on the floor. Where is your primary residence? That's what, we can end this right now. Just tell us where your primary residence is.
No, we could have ended this 18 months ago, but-
Where is your primary residence? Because according to the affidavit that you signed, it stated that it was in Herkimer.
For the record, anybody listening at home, as our councilwoman Samantha Colasmo testifies you and again, and she's pretending like what she says is law and that's what we have to abide by. And that's not actually what the law is.
There's a foil request that the council received.
She is trying to provide.
And there is an affidavit by you stating that you live in Herkimer, New York.
Let me finish this.
And that is your primary residence.
Councilwoman Burmaster, can you call point of order if you're meeting online?
Nobody did this, Bob. Nobody did this, Bob.
Councilwoman?
Did you ask for the foil request? I didn't ask for the foil request.
I didn't ask for it, but-
Okay, and it's there.
Point of order. Let me finish. Sam, you want to do this, let me have my time.
According to what the judge has said, it's not going to have eight votes, so it's not going to go anywhere.
So you're not going to vote for it until you call for a hearing based on the evidence that you receive from the foil?
You think I'm going to vote for it?
You don't vote, Katie, you're excluded from this.
Well, then where's your other eight? Where's your other eight?
Did you ask me a question, councilman? I adjusted my hearing eight.
I did ask you a question. I think that, I think that public officer's law is very clear that at the time of your resident-
The public officer's law says on the second, I think it's second three,
That you have to live in the district you reside.
A resident of the public office, yes.
Correct.
And we have that in our charter too.
Correct. So if you receive information-
It's required.
That a councilperson claims their primary residence is in Herkimer, that's not their primary address.
It's the word residency and residence that is, uh, has to be defined. And there's a lot of case law about that because of it.
I did not ask for the affidavit from her that signed.
You're not going to do this with a simple resolution-
No, I didn't, actually, at all.
That isn't passed according to section 40, and I believe. Now, the alternatives. Any member of the common council feels strongly about this as a private citizen goes out of, file an article 78. And then all the powers that we talked about have nothing to do with it.
The council has the right to Roberts Rules of Order to call for a hearing. Do you have to be refreshed on Roberts Rules?
You're asking me a question.
Yeah, and you're totally inaccurate.
Let me say what I have to say because I don't, I don't want to be misquoted. I, uh, I agree on, uh, some stipulated matters with Mr. Brown. Uh, you, uh, an article 78, of course, we know. However, uh, that has some time limits and, uh, whether it's timely or not, I don't know. The city charter requires, uh, qualifications. You have a right under the powers, uh, section of the city, uh, charter, uh, the second-class cities law, uh, under your powers law to question qualifications of a member. However, how you do it is, is not under that law. You can introduce a, uh, a resolution to remove a member. However, you, uh, that resolution has to provide, uh, for the safeguards in section 40. And also, and also the person that you are seeking to remove obviously is entitled to be, uh, represented by counsel.
So Judge, according to Roberts Rules of Order, it says hearing procedure, and if an investigation recommends action, the accused has the right to a fair hearing. The steps for holding such hearing are notification-
And of course-
The accused member must be informed and given sufficient time to prepare for a defense. The notification should specify the date, the time, and place of the hearing and provide details of alleged misconduct. Rights of the accused, the accused has the right to be present at the hearing, present their defense-
Councilwoman.
Including witnesses and evidence, cross-examination witnesses who testify them, conducting the hearing. The chairperson presides over the hearing and sharing that both sides-
This is a waste of time because you're still confused on the law.
Have an opportunity to present their case. The assembly or committee listens to the testimony and reviews evidence from both sides. This is Roberts Rules of Order.
Where are you reading from?
Roberts Rules of Order.
Oh, that has nothing to do with it.
The accused member may have an advocate-
Yeah, we're talking about state law.
Judge, no, we're not talking about state law. The council has the right, under Roberts Rules of Order, to conduct a hearing. And that is the process and procedure that you have. And if you're telling me as a council member that I don't follow Roberts Rules of Order, I'm going to ask that you please recuse yourself from any further talking about this because it is totally out of control. That is the correct process and procedure.
The rules of order does not apply when it's in conflict with the state law.
What is the state law?
Section 40 is the law of the state of New York.
And what is that?
You have, where's section 40?
No, go ahead, read section 40 to me.
It's in the city's law, just read it to you.
Read, read section 40 to me.
Utica was the one that established, uh, the law of allowing the councils to investigate. And it was done by the public division department.
Judge, can you read section 40 to me?
Huh?
Sam, are you turning a filibuster again or can we have the floor back?
Can you, can you read section 40 to me?
A point of order.
Read, please, yeah.
Point, point of order. I think if we're going to continue this, maybe we should close and, and close section.
No, I just want to hear section 40 because I'm not-
I agree.
But wait, wait, wait. Sam, you wanted to know-
I, I think we've heard enough. I don't think we should be dragging everybody's name. And if, if you want to go and close section and, and, and discuss this any further.
No, I, no, here, I'm not done.
Section 40 requires an ordinance, by the way, by three-forts of all the members, not inconsistent with this chapter or other laws and state, that regulate the powers and duties of any officer or department. And it has to have the power to investigate all city officers and departments and shall have access to all the records and papers kept by every city officer department and have the power to compel attendance of witnesses in the production of books, papers, or other evidence at the meeting of the common council or of any committee thereof. And for that purpose, may issue subpoenas signed by the president. That is the law in Utica because we have never done anything to change section 40 as applies to city of Utica. And city of Utica case back in 19, which you'll find in the Parkham, is the city of Utica case, uh, is the city of Utica common council, um, doesn't say the, uh, the powers that- By its very nature, the power of a city, a council to investigate city officers and the council compel attendance of witnesses by the issuance of subpoenas thereof is not subject to the veto by the mayor. It is one of the functions of a legislative branch of government as opposed to the function of the executive and judicial branch. So that's Hannah versus the common council city of Utica. And that was in 1975.
Okay.
And I was the attorney for-
Judge, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion.
No.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to ask you to draft the ordinance pursuant to section 40 so that the council can review. So I'd like to make that motion.
You can do that, that's what we did in both of those cases.
Okay, thank you.
You want to do an ordinance for-
This is pre-meeting. Okay, if, I may have the floor back, Council.
Absolutely, so then I'll make the motion.
I want to tell you, in the Pileman case, the, uh, ordinance to compel the investigation was unanimously approved by all nine members of the council. And, uh, and I think the same thing was true, uh, back in the Hannah case. Common council approved both, and they did issue subpoenas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Now, I'd like to give the floor back to-
I, I think that's all I want to be saying about this.
Thank you, Judge. And if I may have the floor back and not be interrupted this time. Uh, yeah, as I was saying, I am not fazed by this. Uh, I appreciate the thought of going into executive session, but I want this all on the record. I have nothing to hide. My record shows my commitment and dedication to Utica. And if that, uh, if people want to make it a political game because some nights a week I'm in Herkimer because I'm raising two little girls and I'm a single mom, get over it. But it's not going to work legally. Politically, you can try. I have the floor.
Where is your primary residence? That's what we're asking.
Do we need to pursue a search?
That could just be solved. Just answer it.
You know, I, I think we've discussed this enough.
No, 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 I'm not done.
I just want to know where your primary residence is.
I will answer your questions.
Thank you.
You want to ask, uh, you think if I had the district attorney criminally investigating me for 18 months, I wouldn't have either resigned or been a little bit worried about what I'm doing? Well, think again, because obviously there's nothing wrong with my situation. And here's why. You want to talk about residences, election law? You can have multiple properties and you pick whichever one that you want to be your residence. I'll even take the words of, uh, former district attorney Scott McNamara. This is back in March 2023. He used Trump as an example. He was pointing out that he's, he's at the White House, he's in New York City, and he has a property in Mar-a-Lago. And he chooses there to, to vote. And that is perfectly legal. If you want to look into, uh, even the long case law history, uh, if you actually read the rest of the foil, I wish you would. You were so excited to jump to the affidavits, you seemed to miss all the correspondences with my school.
It's on, it's on every news media outlet known to man that the affidavits were foiled and they were submitted to them.
This is why, this is such a waste of time, this council.
I did not submit anything to the media, I did not submit anything to that. That, that, that's going to be clear.
How many times are we going to twist and turn this?
So I just want to know where your primary residence is. That's all I'm asking.
But it doesn't have anything to do with what you're talking about. With whatever legally you want.
Where is your primary residence?
You keep asking stuff like you know what you're talking about and I don't know when it's going to get through your head that you don't.
Where is your primary residence?
But, let's look at this. Here's the problem.
I think we've-
I have my last sentence.
I'm going to ask for a motion to close.
Wait, I have my-
I think we, we-
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
I'm not worried about this. I'm used to it from my Republican colleagues. What I am shocked by is the United County District Attorney's Office to pursue this for 18 months. That's where my anger comes, and I think that's where people really need to hone in on here of what's going on and who's bidding are we serving and why. But as far as my commitment to Utica, I'll take that up with all you any day. Maybe we can get back to work and actually care about the citizens of the city.
To order, the city clerk will call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Batar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, Drutzy, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for deceased members of the common council.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and in the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any end.
Does the chair her emotion a second to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, we have people signed up. First speaker, Senia Duque. Common Council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four, public comment period. You are in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
You have three minutes, please.
My name is Senia Duque. I'm reading aloud a letter from the Justice for Niangwei Coalition. To Mayor Galimi and the members of the common council, we, your concerned and grieving constituents, are writing to you following the heartbreaking and wrongful death of thirteen-year-old Niangwei at the hands of Utica police officers Patrick Husney, Bryce Patterson, and Andrew Citriniggi. This devastating event has caused deep pain, not only for Niang's family, but for the entire Utica community, crossing lines of race, culture, and background. It has exposed the need for urgent changes to how the city handles public safety and community relations. Since Niang's tragic killing on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the actions taken by the city's administration have been woefully inadequate. The lack of transparency and accountability has not only deepened, has only deepened the community's distrust. We've had one closed meeting, two social media posts, and zero direct engagement with the Muay family or different sectors of the community. This shows a severe lack of leadership and compassion. We, the people of Utica, deserve better. To move forward, build trust, and ensure that this never happens again, we demand the following actions. Publicly express condolences to Niang's family and the community at large in writing to acknowledge the loss and pain felt across Utica. Cover the funeral and burial cause for Niangwei and provide support for the mental needs of his family. Commit to transparency by offering a clear weekly timeline of the investigation in multiple languages, English, Burmese, and Karen. Ensure updates are accessible both in written and verbal formats and appoint an independent investigator. Establish a police accountability board with real power modeled after Rochester's Police Accountability Board to investigate misconduct, create policies, and hold officers accountable with disciplinary measures. The board should represent the diversity of Utica and have the authority to subpoena officers and change UPD policies where necessary. Redirect funding from the Utica Police Department towards programs that reduce violence without police intervention such as community-based violence interruption programs, specifically working alongside NYS Snug Outreach. This approach has proven effective in other cities and is sorely needed in ours. Require UPD to collect and report data on all stops made by officers. This should include who was stopped, where, and why. The community deserves to know how our police operate and this basic level of transparency should be common sense. This has been modeled in New York City with the How Many Stops Act and in Syracuse with the Right to Know Act. Restrict the use of firearm force during foot chases and patrols. No more children should lose their lives simply for running home. The national increase in gun violence demands that we reexamine how UPD officers respond, especially when youth are involved, especially when there's supposed to be de-escalating violence. End the partnership between the Utica School District and UPD by removing school resource officers from our schools. Our schools should be places where children feel safe, not where they are watched and criminalized by law enforcement. Terminate Officer Patrick Husney immediately regardless of the investigation's findings. His reckless and violent actions have shown that he is not fit to serve and he is a danger to our community. This letter is not just a plea, it is a call to action. Niangwei should still be with us today and the fact that he is in demands change, not only in policy, but in how the city's leadership responds to tragedy. Our priority here is clear. Make sure the death of Niangwei leads to lasting change, change that will protect our children, strengthen our communities, and restore trust in those who are sworn and paid to protect us. We expect a formal response and action on these matters and we stand ready to work together to build a stronger, safer, and more united Utica. Sincerely, the Justice for Niangwei team.
Thank you. Diana Tan? Diana, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four, public comment period?
Yes. Good evening, members of the common, common council. My name is Dana and I am twelve years old. I am a student at Donovan's Middle School and part of the Karen community here in Utica. I am here today because Niangwei was one of us, a friend, a brother, a nephew, a son, and part of our refugee community. Niang came to Utica, like many of us, seeking safety and a chance for a better future. He was just thirteen years old, full of dreams, but also carrying the weight of his past as a refugee. Like many Karen youth, he was trying to find his place in the city, but his life was tragically cut short. Since Niang was killed, many of us feel afraid and angry. We came to this country for peace, but now we wonder if we will ever truly be safe. Losing Niang has shattered our sense of security. How can we trust something that, like this? How can we trust something that, like this, won't happen again? We are asking for justice, not just for Niang, but for all of us who feel vulnerable in the city. We need accountability from the police, and we need to know that our voices matter. We hope that you, as our leaders, will stand with us and make sure that this will never happens again. We are a strong community. We have survived war, we have survived displacement, and we will survive this. But we need your help to ensure that no other family has to go through what Niang's family has suffered. Together, we can create a safer Utica for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia Juwi? Nadia, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four. Are you in agreement? You may begin.
Hi, my name is Nadia, and I am twelve years old. I am a student at JFK Middle School and part of the Karren community here in Utica. I am here to talk about how we can keep kids safe and how important it is to invest in programs that keep us busy and engaged. Growing up as the child of parents who don't speak English, it's been hard for my family to know about programs that are available, whether it's after-school activities or weekend events. By the time we found out about them, it was often too late to sign up. This left many of us with nowhere to go and nothing to do. And I know my family isn't the only one. Many other refugee and migrant families are missing out on programs simply because they don't have access to the information. If we want to keep kids safe in Utica, we need to robustly and regularly invest in programs that keep them opportunities, provide a safe space, and other guidance. We need to keep, we need to make sure refugee and migrant youth know about and can access these programs, because right now, many of us are left out. That's why we're asking the city to allocate more funds to community programs that help kids rather than directing those funds to more police. If we want to prevent violence and keep young people safe, we need programs that support us, keep us engaged, and offer us communities without proper funding. These programs can't reach all the kids who need them, especially those of us who come from refugee and migrant families. We are asking you to prioritize and fund these programs so that all youth, no matter their background, can participate and feel safe. This is how we protect kids and build a stronger, safer community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ah, December? Ah, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes. My name is Et and I am eleven years old. I am a student at Thomas Jefferson and a part of Karren community here in Utica. I want to talk about how police officer, officers or resources officers in our school affect us as students. For many of us, schools doesn't, school doesn't feel safe place of learning anymore. Instead, it feels like a prison. When we see officers walking in the halls, it makes us feel watched, like we're being treated as suspects, not students. We're here to learn, but pre- pre-seeds of resource officers make it hard to feel safe. Instead of feeling protected, we feel like we're constantly being judged or waiting for something to go wrong. For kids who have come from countries with war and violence, violence, kids like me, seeing officers in our schools can bring up a lot of fear and anxiety. Many of us come from places where police were not there to help, and having them in school, schools doesn't make us feel any safer here. It just makes us feel more nervous, more distanced from the teachers, like we don't belong because we are surveilled all day like criminals. We need schools to be places where we feel supported, not watched over by law enforcement. We need mental health counselors, monitors, and teachers who understand us. If you want to make schools safer for all students, we ask that you remove, remove resource officers and invest in resource that will truly help us, like mental health service, tutoring, and after-school programs. Our school should be places where we can learn, grow, and feel safe, without the fear that comes with having police in the hallways.
Ray Tu Caet? Ray Tu, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Ray Tu Caet and I am fourteen years old. I am a student at Proctor High School and a part of the Karren community here in Utica. I'm here today to talk about how, talk about, I'm here today to talk about how even many of us lived in Utica for years, some of us even becoming U.S. citizens. There are still times when we are, when we feel like outsiders in a place we call home. As refugees, we came to Utica to build new lives, but the city has not provided enough resources to help us feel truly a part of the community. We often feel, feel overlooked and forgotten, like our needs are an afterthought. While we are residents of Utica, and for many of us, citizens of the United States, we don't always receive the support we need to feel welcomed and included. Instead, the burden of helping us settle and succeed falls on nonprofit organizations. These organizations work hard to fill in these gaps, but the truth is that it should not be their responsibility alone. The city needs to do more to help these refugees, especially when it comes to providing, to providing resources to help us integrate into the community, access opportunities, and feel like we are, like we truly belong. For example, the city failed to adequately provide interpretation for Niang's family. Following his death and during the press, press conference the next day, a Burmese interpreter was provided, delaying the press conference as the city scrambled to find someone new on the spot. When refugees are treated like outsiders, it affects more than just us. It weakens the entire community. But when we are supported, we can contribute, thrive, and strengthen Utica as a whole. We're asking to the city to invest in its refugees' residence by providing more resources and support so that the organizations aren't forced to do the work all on their own. We want to feel more at home here, but we need the city's help to make it that happen. Please help to make a more welcoming Utica for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Media Land? Media, the common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes.
You may begin.
Hello, my name is Media Land. Ms. Chi War, Ms. Chi Wars deserves justice for her son. I would like to read the notice of claim again in Niangwe's memory so that his story stays alive in all of us. We will never let his memory die. Utica, New York, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Chi War, the mother and legal guardian of thirteen-year-old Niangwe, has filed a notice of claim against the city of Utica, alleging multiple violations of civil rights and wrongful death in connection with the fatal police shooting of her son on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. The claim can outlines a series of serious offenses, including excessive force, false arrest, and the failure of officers to intervene. The tragic incident occurred when three Utica Police Department officers, Patrick Husney, Bryce Patterson, and Andrew Citrin, unlawfully stopped Niangwe for jaywalking at approximately ten eighteen P.M. near the intersection of Shaw and Bennett Streets. The situation quickly escalated as Niangwe, in fear, attempted to run. After being caught by Officer Patterson, Niangwe was pinned down to the ground and punched repeatedly in the face, despite Niangwe posing no threat. Officers Husney proceeded to shoot him in the chest, leading to his death. The notice of the claim filed by Ms. Chi War in her capacity as the administrator of Niangwe's estate names the city of Utica and the Utica Police Department as responsible for the actions of the officers involved. The claim alleges numerous causes, including but not limited to wrongful death, excessive force, assault and battery, false arrest, civil rights violation, negligent hiring, training, and supervision, compromise, compromising and failure to prevent or intervene in the unlawful acts. According to the claim, the physical and emotional injuries caused to Niangwe include pain and suffering, loss of dignity, mental distress, and the ultimate loss of his life. The damages also extend to the family, who seek justice for the psychological, financial, and emotional impact of the incident. Justice is love in action and is precisely our commitment in putting love in action in pursuit of justice that forces us today to hold the mayor and UPD accountable. We must hold the mayor and UPD accountable so that Niangwe's story goat does not get swept under the rug. As, as was the case with Jessie Lee Rose and Walter Washington.
You gotta please finish up.
Niangwe is our brother. We will never forget him. Long live Niangwe. Thank you.
Mohammed Ali? Mohammed, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period. You may begin.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Mohammed Ali, known as Big Grizzly in Utica, New York. And I'm a part of the Somali Bantu community here in Utica, New York. I've, I've been part of communities such as Big Town Utica Community Center and Utica royalties as well, and other communities such as like that. And I'm here today because Niangwe was one of us, a friend, a brother, a nephew, a son, and part of our great refugee community. Even though I may not know the kid or have not seen him, I'm here to support the late Niangwe. Saying sorry without action is hollow. Sorry won't bring Niangwe back. Sorry won't prevent another child from being shot by police, but do you know what will? There are so many things that the city can do to restore trust and actually show us that they care about refugees. The first step is to answer the demands and acknowledge that they will take these solutions seriously. The demands that my friends have laid out this evening attempts to bring light to an issue that has impacted all of us around the city and nation. I hope that the city and the common council will take these demands seriously and actually do something about police brutality and not just say sorry over and over again. We cannot have another healing circle or community conversation once another kid gets shot. There are many achievable things that the city can do to restore and rebuild trust so that other kids will not suffer the same thing as Niangwe did. One of, one of the things you can do is change the way police interact with the youth and public. Police should not be allowed to shoot once a kid is apprehended, especially if they are actively being beaten to the ground. If three grown officers cannot de-escalate the situation where a thirteen-year-old kid is being punched to the ground, then what are we paying you to do? Such situations like that needs to be justified as soon as possible. There is no tomorrow. There is no next week. There is no next month. There is no next year. Not even ten years later, justice must prevail. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I hope that you all will work with us to restore trust in this community. Thank you all.
Thank you. Kay Kow? Okay, common council has provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period. Are you in agreement? Thank you.
Dear Mayor Galimi and members of the common council, we, the undersigned members of the Utica community, write to you in the wake of the devastating loss of thirteen-year-old Niangwe. His death has left a deep mark on our city, and we are united by one critical goal, to prevent any more children from being shot in our community. No family should have to endure this kind of pain, and we must ensure that our city is a place where all children, no matter their background, feel safe walking the streets. We are the generation that grew up with the traumatic and deadly reality of police brutality. Broadcasted on our screens and social media of Tamir Rice, Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, and Trayvon Martin, and now Niangwe. Our community is under-resourced and over-policed. Years of redlining that and divestment have created the conditions that we are experiencing today, where kids are too scared to be outside their homes, so they feel the need to carry BB guns to protect themselves from other people and cops. The tragic events of June twenty-eighth in which Niangwe was shot and killed while simply walking home late at night show the urgent need for change. His death was not only preventable, but has deepened the distrust between law enforcement and the communities they serve. To move forward, we must act to ensure that such a tragedy never again happens. We are asking you, as our leaders, to critically think and imagine what democratic and inclusive safety truly looks like. We need investment from you in quality community spaces, education, safe and healthy homes, transportation, physical activity, and healthcare that promotes healthy communities. We respectfully urge you to take immediate action to protect our children and rebuild public trust. This letter is not just a plea, it is a call to action. Niangwe should still be with us today, and the fact that he isn't demands change, not only in policy, but in how this city's leadership responds to tragedy. We must ensure that no more children are lost to preventable violence. The message is clear and simple. No children should lose their lives to gun violence. As leaders of Utica, you have the opportunity and responsibility to enact changes that will protect our children, restore trust in law enforcement, and ensure that our entire community feels safe. Utica must work to build a city where all residents, no matter their background, feel safe and supported. And the priority is clear, to make sure that the death of Niangwe leads to lasting change, change that will protect our children, strengthen our community, and restore trust in those who are sworn to, sworn and paid to protect us. We expect a formal response and action on these matters and stand ready to work together to build a stronger, safer, more united Utica. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Report of city officers. We'll start with Budget Director Almere Caltech.
Just to give an update on our funding, we're approaching the twenty twenty-fourth deadline to allocate the funds. With all the, some of the projects that are over, we're ensuring that.
No justice!
No peace!
No racism!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No racism!
No peace!
Do you feel ashamed when you hear my name?
Nyamwe!
Nyamwe! Do you feel ashamed when you hear my name?
Nyamwe!
Nyamwe! Do you feel ashamed when you hear my name?
Nyamwe!
Almere, continue, please.
We're making sure that any projects that are currently overspent, that we make sure they're all funded and the projects get completed in a timely manner. We're ensuring that any projects that have a contract obligation, that they're being put for the intended uses. And we're working diligently to make sure that we don't miss out on any of these public funds.
Thank you, Almere. Commissioner of Codes, Marcus Phillips.
I just want to remind people, as it gets colder, you know, the public is our eyes and ears. People in this council are our eyes and ears, and as it gets colder, people go inside. And if you have vacant houses, structures, garages in your neighborhoods that are unsecured or that you're concerned about, you want us to make sure they're secure, now's a good time to do that because we, you know, we're having a problem in the city with squatters inside of vacant properties and some of the dangers that's causing in general. And one thing that's going to solve it is if we're proactive and we know where all these properties are. So I just encourage everybody on the council and the residents. And again, I do this every meeting and thank them for doing their jobs, but parks and police and fire, I mean, we're working on this stuff every day. So the best thing to do is just be proactive, and if there's a vacant structure in your neighborhood, please let us know so that we can try to make sure it's secure.
Thank you. City Engineer, Nick Brianbecker.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner of Parks, Mark Sokolowski.
Nothing to report.
Chief of Staff, Mike Gentile.
Yeah, so went to an event at the Mohawk Valley Community Agency today. They had their first annual Justice Jams, which is a nice event where they promoted all the different types of opportunities they have through their departments. So I encourage people to reach out and check that out on their website, et cetera. Also, you know, the administration stands and continue to stand, willing to talk to anybody and have conversations to move things forward with the current community. We've had several meetings. We've taken several steps with funding, with communication, et cetera, and haven't turned down one yet. So we continue to remain willing to have any conversations that they're willing to have with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Thomas, Urban Renault.
Nothing to report.
Stephanie DiGiorgio, Corporation Counsel.
Nothing to report.
Fire Chief Angersall.
No reports, ma'am.
Deputy Chief Noon.
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
I'll just say something quick, but the resource officers in the schools, being a parent, I'm very happy that we have them. They provide safety and protection for our students, and my kids enjoy seeing the resource officer. Plus, that's not the authority of the common council, that's the Board of Education that makes that decision. And just with programs, just being a teacher, being at Donovan Middle School, I'll just, in my thirty years plus, we have more guidance counselors, social workers, assistant principals, sports, we have boys soccer, girls soccer, boys football, boys basketball, girls basketball. We have a police stand-up in the morning and afternoon. We have art club. We have a spectator. We have yearbook club. There's many, many programs filtered throughout our whole school district.
Miss Lanius, we'll go to petitions and remonstrant citizen appeals.
Do we have a catch-up? The City Utica Cash Report for September twenty twenty-four totals thirty-nine point eight eight five million received and filed.
Thank you. Misle, petitions, remonstrant citizen appeals, First District Council Member Katie Il.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight and speaking. And, you know, our council meetings have been very full each week, and I think it's a sobering reminder, hopefully, for all my colleagues of why we are really here. If you guys were paying attention to the meeting earlier tonight, I just, it's so hard to hear these grievances and the public comment, and then to just contrast that with, unfortunately, it just seems like some of my colleagues only care about me and not the citizens of Utica, and I'm deeply sorry for that. And I will keep beating that drum of trying to remind them of why we're really here every single time. And, you know, it just gets me thinking, maybe they think if they focus on me, they can distract the rest of Utica from the fact we've overtaxed our people by millions of dollars. And the reason I know that is because I sit in this back room every time I close my coffee shop at four P M. I get here because I have thirty minutes to go through the books and go line by line because I am present in Utica. That is, there's no question in that. And honestly, maybe that's, I could see why somebody would want somebody like me removed from office for those reasons. I just keep going through, I'm just flap, yeah, I guess I'm not shocked by this council. I'm just shocked at the greater experience that I've had with Oneida County as a whole. And it's just, again, I have to say it because I finally have the floor to speak without interruption, which is something we need to work on a little bit more. But it's funny to me that my Republican colleagues condemn something that's perfectly legal, but they don't condemn bribes and election fraud. Let that sink in. So once again, my Republican colleagues are trying to abuse our laws and process that are in place for their personal gain, and that's what this is about. So I have no problems with whatever jokes that they want to post here. I'm obviously not for it because it's a bigger waste of time and resources. And every time my constituents call me, they aren't asking about where I am that day. They're asking about their homes. That's why we're here. They care about their properties. And I'm sorry it's politically inconvenient for you, for some people on the council, that what I'm doing is legal. And if you think not, I ask, if having to residence is illegal in any way, then why am I not prosecuted? But, yeah, eighteen months of investigation, ten months of twenty-four-seven surveillance, hundreds of thousands of dollars, just let that sink in. That is astronomical. I guess I should be honored. I don't know what I'm doing in the C, but I think maybe Utica needs more of it. So in the meantime, yeah, if people have questions, a lot of my colleagues will continue to try to spin what this means because, you know, they have one agenda in mind. And if they bring it up, just remind them of why we're really here. Thank you.
Thank you. Second District Majority Leader, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo, I want to thank everybody for coming. Makes me feel good to see the city people want to get involved. I want to thank the department heads every, every meeting, go around the table, it's the same department heads. Without these people, the city be in bad shape. They run the city. It's not an easy task, and I want to thank them for doing what we expect them to do, and we take it for granted. I want to take the Commissioner of Parks, and he did me a big, a big, big, big. And I finally, one of my constituents is very happy today, so thank you. But I can't thank you enough. You come every week, and it means a lot to me. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. Third District Council Member and Pro Temp, Joseph Vitar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well said by Council Member Burmaster. I have nothing to add to that. Otherwise, all set tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. Fourth District Council Member, Frank Carcone.
Now that cold weather's come, and I'd like to thank all the departments that made all the summer events go safe. And very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth District Council Member, Vanis Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just reiterating what Councilman Burmaster said about the city pets. They've been doing a great job. The police department's been doing a great job. I don't know how the technology for shots fired is set up, but it seems to be working. They're getting there pretty quick, and they're finding the shell casings, so, and there's no bodies, so something's going good with that. I also want to let you know the cornhill revivilation project this community foundation is going to talk about, that's still going to be October twenty-third. That's the community dinner, and that's from five to seven at the N V C C Alumni Hall. And Harvest on the Hill is October twenty-sixth on James Street, twelve P M. to five P M. That's where the kids get to walk down the street. The police have everything blocked off for them, and everybody just gives them what they want to give them candy or whatever. So thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, council member. Sixth District Council Member, Joseph Beatres.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I wasn't going to talk on this, but I listened to my colleague in the first ward talk. So when I became a councilman in two thousand nineteen in January, I had to sign a book on where I lived, okay? Doesn't matter anything else. Nobody on this council tried to hurt or hurt her. We asked for an explanation that we got as a foil, okay? So to say anything, nobody was asking or trying to get rid of anybody. The foil, which we could have went in executive session and talked, it was just to ask. When you get a foil, I'm not doing my job to my residents in the sixth ward. If I get a foil and I read it, and there's all sorts of stuff on it, there's nothing wrong with asking the question, okay? Nobody here, well, I can't say nobody, I'm going to speak for myself, okay, was ever trying to get rid of her, okay? But she owed us an explanation. When there's, okay, that's it. That's all I got to say. It's kind of like the island. It's over. I'm sick of fighting about where people live, this and that, okay? Like my mother used to say, where there's smoke, there's fire. This has been going on since two thousand nineteen, okay? When I get notified from the clerk that there's a foil of two hundred pages, it's my duty as a councilperson to read it and ask the question. And I want to thank the city engineer. We're getting the paving, is finishing up in North Utica. So just when they're doing your streets, you will probably get a notice. Keep your cars off the road. They did a great job over the weekend, and we're getting to the end of it now. Green waste pickup, you can bring it to the curb to November fourteenth. And lastly, on ten twenty-eight, the North Utica meeting, I'll be there with Legislature Gentile from five thirty to six thirty for my regular office hours. At six thirty is our main meeting, and there'll be Senator Joe Griffo and James Myers, who are running against each other, will be there to speak. So we welcome anybody, and obviously, everybody knows, you know how to get ahold of me, and I'll take care of anything that you guys, I can help you with, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member. Council Member at Large and Minority Leader, Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Member at Large, Samantha Collessimaltestha.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank the fire department. Fire Prevention Week was at Watts Williams this past week. Everybody did a phenomenal job. The kids enjoyed it. So thank you for continuing that and bringing awareness to the students at the elementary level. The other thing I have this evening is, we had a meeting yesterday at Margaret Hamm Apartments. I also want to thank the police, the fire codes, the city for coming to that and trying to discuss the issues that the residents had. This is something that's been ongoing for them over the past several months and several years, and hopefully we can come to a conclusion to help them feel safe in their home once again. So thank you to the city for coming to that, and thank you, Budget Director and all department heads for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. We're going to have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number one.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Be it ordained that Section two sixteen, three sixty-eight, scheduled M, limited parking, fifteen minutes during business hours, be amended to read, two parking spaces on the east side of Genesee Street, fronting two fifty-five Genesee Street, closest to Hopper Street, Sunday through Saturday, eight A M. to five P M. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected. Can I have your votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number two?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Limited parking, be it ordained that Section two sixteen, three sixty-seven, scheduled L, limited parking, thirty minutes during certain hours, Genesee Street, east side from the intersection of Genesee Street, Hopper Street to point one hundred feet south of some, of the same intersection. The hours will be from nine A M. to five P M., except Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. Be rescinded, be it further ordained that the signage be removed. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance, Resolution number three?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment, the Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, Michael Ruggiero, twenty-one oh six Attilia Street, Utica, New York, one three five oh
Eight yeas adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed resolution number four?
Motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment, the Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, Ruth Concepcion, ten Memorial Parkway, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Votes,
Eight yeas adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed ordinance number five?
Motion.
Thank you.
Intersection where stop required, be it ordained that Section two sixteen, three fifty-eight, scheduled C, intersection where stop required, be amended to include the following, Hazelhurst, Hazelhurst Avenue, Avenue, Arcadia Avenue, Southeast Corner, Arcadia Avenue, Hazelhurst Avenue, Northeast Corner, be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed resolution number six?
Motion.
Thank you.
Placement and honorary street sign for Reverend Dr. Mary Webster on Arcadia Avenue. Whereas Reverend Dr. Mary Webster has made it her mission to help advance the betterment of all peoples and support the spiritual well-being of the community and its residents. And whereas Reverend Dr. Mary Webster has served on countless boards and committees throughout the community and has been recognized for her numerous achievements, and whereas the City of Utica Common Council, along with the residents of the City of Utica, are grateful for the contributions made by Reverend Dr. Mary Webster, therefore be it resolved that the City of Utica Common Council does hereby honor and recognize Dr. Mary Webster for many years of service and dedication in the City of Utica and to the residents. Be it further resolved that there should be placed on the street, Arcadia Avenue, and Maryland Avenue, and Arcadia Avenue, Hazelhurst Avenue, an honorary sign declaring this to be Reverend Dr. Mary Webster Way, and be it further resolved that this resolution be inscribed in the minutes of the City of Utica Common Council meeting held on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Votes, please?
Yes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Anything coming out of committee? Motion adjourned? Motion to adjourn?